September 15, 2025. I'm Mayor Kurt Wilson, and I'd like to introduce my colleagues and council members present. Councilmember Sarah Visa will not be joining us this evening. Councilmember Christine Hall, Mayor Protem, and Councilmember Lee Hills, Councilmember David Johnson, Councilmember William Mortland, and Councilmember Alan Sales. I'll now turn the meeting over to our Chief Administrative Officer and City Administrator, Mr. Randy Knighton, to explain how the meeting is run. Mr. Knighton.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wilson, and good evening to everyone. This is a special called Public Hearing on the Milage Rate, which is the property tax rate, which is mandated by state requirements. If you wish to speak on this item, please complete a comment card and hand it to Communication Staff Member Karen Zidimer, who's over here. So if you wish to speak on this item, please fill out a comment card and ensure she is able to provide it to our city clerk. Speakers will be called by the city clerk in the order cards are received. We ask that everyone, of course, observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of the meeting this evening, which is reflective of this great community of Roswell. And with respect to the proceedings, we ask that attention is given to the person speaking, and if it's necessary to have an independent conversation, we ask that you exit the rear doors to the vestibule area. Of course, the mayor is the presiding officer and will ensure the orderly exchange of questions, comments, and discussion. We also encourage everyone to visit the City of Roswell website for news, events, and meetings, and to participate in the various activities in the City of Roswell, as we all make Roswell the number one family community in America. Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Knighton. Could y'all please join me in a moment of silence and invocation? A moment of silence, obviously, to recognize events of the past week and to recognize healing for our country and for our city, for all our people. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of this day. Thank you for the gift of this city, the gift of its people, for the gift of this land, of this country, for the gift of freedom, for the gift of us being able to express the things we agree on and the things we disagree on. For I pray bring healing to our country, to our city. Help us to engage with one another in ways that are productive, ways that raise you up and raise one another up. Be with us and help us to do much better as a people, I pray, Lord. Thank you for your goodness. Pray for your great blessing upon the city staff. Pray for your great blessing upon the city council. I pray for your great blessing upon the wonderful people and businesses of Roswell. And I thank you for your goodness. Thank you. And will y'all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. City Clerk Nancy Long, we have, I believe, one item on our agenda, which is the public hearing on the milage rate of 4.949 for tax year 2025. Would you please read the item?
Yes, this is the public hearing on the milage rate of 4.949 for tax year 2025.
Is there a presentation for the public hearing? Negative. Bill Gottschall, our Chief Financial Officer, is in attendance to address any questions. Nancy, are there any Roswell residents who would like to speak on the milage rate?
Yes, we have one speaker, Darrell O'Hare.
Thank you.
I actually came because I was hoping to see a presentation, but I guess not. I'm gonna... I have a few concerns about the current milage rate. I understand that it's not increasing. However, property taxes are increasing for... because property taxes are... our value of our homes are going up. Good news for the City of Roswell. But at the same time, the cost of living and everything else has really... everything else has really increased. My energy bills, my grocery bills, everything else has increased quite a bit. So even though the millage rate is not going to increase, as I understand it, it is not a... it is not keeping the same tax rate, because we'll be still paying more taxes as a result of that. My question, I guess, is if we were to do a rollback tax, a millage rate, I think that's what they call it, would that... is there a figure or a number that would equal what we collect in taxes now as a result of rolling back, doing a rollback millage rate? So that's my concern, is that even though we have not increased the millage rate, we are actually going to receive much more in that fund source, if I'm correct? So for people like me or my husband, firmly middle class, the bills are all going up. I do know that a lot of the services within the city are also going up for people when they're trying to engage in the practices at the parks or get some classes and do all those kinds of things. So all of the... I would like to keep our taxes as low as possible with the millage rate by looking at a possible rollback rate so that we collect the same amount of taxes versus just saying we're doing the same millage rate, because those are two different things, as I understand it.
Darrell, you're exactly right. There is definitely a difference between the rollback rate and keeping the same millage rate or property tax rate. And in fact, the proposal that the council currently is to keep the millage rate the same, but it is not the same effective tax dollars that you'll pay. And if you probably noticed, two of the three years, we have actually rolled back the millage rate. This year, we are not proposing to do that. Bill, would you like to address that specifically, I think? And there's a dollar figure there with respect to the actual dollar value of what a rollback rate is versus just keeping the millage rate the same, or the property... the property tax rate the same?
Sure. So last week, as we walked through the presentation, we used an example with the Roswell millage rate, the 4.949 rate, that using it on a fair market value home of $550,000, the assessed value would be 220, and that would result in payment of property taxes of approximately $1,089. This is without exemptions of any sort, whether home sit exemption, floating exemption, or otherwise, because there's too many things to mix in with that. If we were to use the rollback rate, which is about 4.658%, then this homeowner would pay $69 less in property taxes compared to $1,089.
That's a very good way of putting it, what the actual homeowner would be paying in the difference. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you so much. That's per year, $69 per year, correct?
Right. That would be for the... the assessment would change from 1,088, and it would be less approximately $69 of that.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Darrell. Nancy, do you have any other Roswell residents that would like to address it?
There are no other speakers.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Allen Sales.
I know, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I know we share the goal of being out of the property tax business, Darrell. I love that question. And our work, the work we're doing on the economic development, just like across the street, I have to figure out my bearings here, you know, that is going to replace a fair amount of our millage rate right there. What is one mil worth for the City of Roswell today, do you know?
It's about $7 million right now.
About $7 million.
Yes, sir.
So we are currently working on one location, one opportunity, that would be more than one mil reduction if we... over what it's currently paying on that same piece of ground. So we're working on economic development specifically to reduce property taxes. That's our goal. Thank you.
It's worth noting, too, that I think what's interesting is particularly through the productive work of Randy Knighton and his team over the last three years, this is the only city in North Fulton that's actually... actually rolled back the property tax rate two of the last three years. It has the lowest property tax rate that it's had in 17 years. But the question is, I think we share the ultimate goal, I know that I do, is that we ultimately wish to eliminate the residential property tax for a City of Roswell residence. And that's one of the many factors behind, I think, the significant measures we take in our budgeting, as well as our economic development plans and creating new sources of revenue, because ultimately, we do... it is our plan to not only reduce residential property tax, but ultimately to eliminate it. So we appreciate your concern, Darrell. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments or questions from council? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. I thought we should... I would like David to say why we're doing this as a special meeting, just for the record, just so everybody knows why, that this is a special call meeting.
Yes. Under the state law, if there is... if the city is not rolling back the millage rate, we are required to have three hearings, and this is one of those hearings. One of those hearings is required to start between 6 o'clock and 7 o'clock. So our normal start time is 7 o'clock, so this is a special call meeting at 6 o'clock under state law.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Allen, anything else, sir? Council, any other thoughts, comments, or questions? Thank you so much. All right. Being that there are no other comments, and there is not a vote on this item, this special call public hearing meeting of September 15, 2025 is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.